Let's bring this meeting to order. I would like to thank everybody in attendance for showing up. I would like to thank our guest of honor, Mayor Jones and Chief Rogers. I want to start out like we always do with a brief moment of silence to honor all of our ancestors that allowed us to be here and to take advantage of this moment. So if everybody would, please join me in a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. All right, so let's get started, man. I'm excited. This is our second community meeting, and I'm very honored to have Mayor Jones and Police Chief Rogers in the building. I'm honored to have each and every one of you here to share this moment, to share this information. So we're running a little late, so let's get right into it. First up, we're gonna have Ms. Nicole Swinson. As you all know, that's a dear, near friend of mine. She's gonna go over the CDC and the most recent COVID-19 updates that we have. And following her, we're gonna get right into Ms. Teresa, who is going to join us through Zoom, so that we're gonna make sure that you can hear her, and we're gonna have some questions for her. Any question that you might have for people that is joining us on Zoom, please put them in the comment box below, and Nicole or I will read those off. So, thanks a lot. I'm gonna turn it over to Nicole when we get started. Thanks, y'all. Everybody got an opportunity to kind of jot down notes, take notes, whatever you need. But we're gonna keep it moving. It's 7:40 right now, so we're gonna try to move along a little quicker. Right now, this is probably like outside of the question and answers that's coming up. This is like my favorite part. Next up is my man. I have the pleasure and the honor again of introducing what is turning into be a good friend of mine, Dr. Chris Herring. Just to give you a little backdrop, Dr. Chris Herring has more than 35 years in the public safety field as a practitioner, professor, and a counselor. He has facilitated courses certified by the United States Department of Justice, Office of Community Policies and Services, and the U.S. Department of Homeland Security throughout the nation. For more than 27 years, Chris Harris has taught at the college level in disciplines of homeland security, fire service management, criminal justice, public administration, and sociology. He earned a BA degree in political science and holds a master's degree in public administration, sociology, human services, and divinity. Dr. Herring earned a doctorate of ministry degree. He has a dissertation focused on engaging the church to strengthen the relationship between black men and police. Dr. Herring has been involved in mentoring at-risk youth for more than 30 years, mentoring more than 40 young men and women. Dr. Herring is also instrumental in laying the foundation for mentoring programs in two communities. He has self-published three books that focus on law enforcement in black community. Dr. Herring is also an ordained minister and has led international community engagement and teachings and discipline ministries. Man, if that wasn't enough to say that this guy's qualified to come up here and speak to us about his next subject, man, I don't know what more you're looking for. So without no further ado, man, can I get a warm round of applause for Dr. Herring?
Good evening, and thank you, Brother Joel. I tell you what, whenever I am asked to come to Duplin County, I drop what I'm doing. And I was speaking with the mayor earlier, and some of you know I've said before, my roots are in Duplin County. Both of my parents were born and raised here. They migrated to California where I was born, and my mother later returned. And as a young man, once again, the mayor and I was speaking earlier, I would come down from Fayetteville during the summers. And if you wanted to want to talk about seeing a site, seeing a city boy crop tobacco, old-school days, and pick shit beans and pick blueberries there, it was a sight, that's for sure. But if you stayed with my grandfather, the late Robert Leslie Carr, you were going to work. And I learned much from that. And I, of course, just love Duplin County. Real quickly, here, several years ago, I was in Warsaw with a Homeland Security certified course that focused on the faith community and preparing them for disasters and emergency management, and then Green Everson a couple of years ago. So once again, I drop what I'm doing and I come here. Joel and Nicole, this is great. This is what it's all about at the grassroots level. So thank you for what you're doing there. Mayor and Chief, just thank you so much. It speaks a whole lot about your commitment to your community for being here. All right, so let me get to a point, a few things here. One thing I want to speak about is when you're talking about social justice or when you talk about bringing change, because that's what we're talking about here, it depends on the lens that you're looking at or what approach you're gonna take. One approach you can take is a global approach, globalization, right? You're concerned with what happens throughout the world, and the reason you're concerned with what happens throughout the world is whatever happens in one place of the world impacts the other. So globalization, and we can talk about health issues from a global perspective. We can speak about a lot of things from a global perspective there that is broader, but the world, as they say, is getting much smaller there. I've been to Africa on three occasions, working with an arm of the United Nations in Uganda, dealing with crime prevention and doing ministry work, and worked in Kenya, rural Kenya, with whales and orphanages and things like that. Why? Because that globalization perspective of social justice there you can think of. You can also decide, and whatever you're doing is take the national approach, right? Knowing that our great country is diverse, but there are things that we need to address in the nation that impacts all of us there as well. One of the things, I'm working with FEMA and Homeland Security and the cops office, a lot of that was national things that were happening. We know things are going on in other parts of the country that we are concerned with there. And for example, years ago, when we had the Million Man March, I was there, you know, for that national perspective of bringing about change. Quickly, too, we can then go on, you can take the state approach, right? There are so many things that are unique to our great state, right here in North Carolina, that needs to be addressed, you know, that we have to go to, and that's significant at the state level. But what you're doing here tonight, to me, is one of the most important levels and points, the local, right? The local. Yes, there's global, yes, there's national, yes, there's state, but when you're talking about local, that's where a lot of things begin, right? If you look at it from a public safety perspective, if there's a storm or hurricane, yes, you want help from FEMA, this or that, but it's right there, local, where you're gonna get the media assistance, right? If your house is on fire, it's your neighbor that's gonna probably be there first there. So local, so when you all do this, and we're here at this local level, county and city and town, that's significant. So what I'm thinking about tonight here, while there are many things going on globally, while there are many things going on nationally, while there are many things going on throughout the state there and all, I'm thinking about here, right here in Duplin County in Beulahville, because that's gonna be unique to some of your, many of your concerns there. So that's just a food of thought. All of it's important, but you just have to make sure that you understand what approach you're taking at what time there as well. And I'm sure Chief is familiar with this. I just want to speak about community policing for a second. And the reason I want to speak about community policing because it addresses many of the issues, and it's much broader than many people think, right? So in the 90s, I am a young man. So in the 90s, we worked with the Department of Justice, and we went around the country and through the cops office, and I stood up the North Carolina Center for Community Policing there. And we were really pushing and engaging, and there was a lot of money for community policing. I'm gonna talk to you a second here about, and it was rejected so strong from so many in law enforcement and not supported from so many in the community and even the black community. What I mean by that is like tonight, you gotta come out, you gotta get involved, you gotta bring about change, you know? And so when I see a lot of what's going on now, it doesn't surprise me because I'm saying, hey, look, decades ago, we said, let's get ahead of this. Let's do something. So what is community policing? When you think about community policing, it's a philosophy. It's a management style. It's not a program. It's an approach that it takes the whole community to get in. It's often just headed by or steered by by law enforcement, but doesn't necessarily have to be. So it's a philosophy, it's a management approach there, and there are three major parts of it. And this is gonna be important for some of the things we talk about. When I mean today, I mean in society today. There is for law enforcement, because it's often headed by that, or it's called community policing, there's the organizational transformation. That's one, organizational transformation. The second major part of that, there is the community engagement. And the third part of that is problem solving, strategic problem solving. So let's quickly go to organizational transformation. That's where you go to the law enforcement agency, and you're looking at it from top to bottom. You're looking at it saying, is the law enforcement agency organized for that specific community in a way to help meet the goals of the community? You following me? So you're looking at policies, you're looking at recruitment, you're looking at hiring, you're looking at promotions, you're looking at, and we don't have time, and you all know, I know it's in this particular book here, we talked about it briefly there. You're looking at something called patrol deployment and staffing, right? See, the problem is, a lot of times, we don't know about our own law enforcement organizations, structures, purpose, things like that, and we don't proactively attempt to go get engaged until something happens, right? So organizational transformation, what I hear a lot in this thing called, I know you're gonna address later, so I won't say much on it, but defunding the police, and that term has sort of grown and done a number of different things. So I won't really address that too much here, but I'll say this. When it comes to organizational transformation, you're taking a look at the services, right? You're taking a look at the funding, you're taking a look at what? Here's an example. I started out my career as a young man with Chapel Hill Police Department. It was a couple of days ago. So I was a police officer, firefighter, and EMT back in the days of public safety. We had police social workers, three of them, civilians. They did report to the chief, right? But they were professional certified social workers. So I remember responding to a call for service one day, and there was this older black female just throwing dishes, throwing dishes, going off, throwing dishes. I was 21 years old. I've been through rookie school and field training, but I didn't know what to do with an older black woman throwing dishes, right? Because what I thought I knew, it probably wouldn't have been pretty, right? And so I would have probably figured something out, right? And hopefully, I didn't get hurt, and hopefully, she didn't get hurt. But what was I able to do? Communications, do we have a social worker on duty? That police social worker came out there, I can see him now, I'll say his name, Ken Chavis, a black male at the time, an older than me. He comes out, and the first thing he says, then when he gets there, he says, "Herring, get back, get back." And I know I gotta move on. "Herring, get back, get back." Because what he knew, I didn't know, my uniform bothered her, irritated her, agitated her even more. He went smooth, did his social work thing, this and all that, talked to her. Next thing I knew, he was up in, it was a trailer, then all that, and he comes out, and he says, "I got the daughter on the way. She's off her medicine." So why do I say that it took funding for the social work unit? And at the time, that was unique. But remind you that that was Chapel Hill with a certain amount of money, the three social workers, you know? So I don't know, I can play this game, and I truly don't know this. I'm talking out the side of my neck at this point. Did they take money away from saying, we'll have fewer officers to fund the social workers? Or did they just fund the social? I don't know how that budget process worked, but I do know they had a social work unit. And there are other things like that you can, and let me say this as well, what's important about that, and we'll move on here. I can tell you, like me, many police officers really did not have an interest in doing that type of work, but would or have to. So, and then like recruitment, where do you get recruitment? And here's the last piece on this organizational transformation. Are there law enforcement officers who are there that understands the community and are interested in moving forward with improving the quality of life? That's a different mindset of officer. Yes, there's law enforcement, but there's this proactive improving the quality of life. So because when you improve the quality of life, a lot of the crime stuff goes away. But it takes something to hire that top officer and then to promote the right types of supervisors. You following me? That organizational transformation is like, we don't have time, so we have to move on. The next thing is community engagement. I wish I had a dollar for every time that we would call community meetings and people wouldn't come. And then when they wouldn't come, it's one thing to come to the meeting, and it's another thing to say, now, we need you to stay engaged for a year. If the people own the police department, that means, as in public works, as also recreation, as in all of it, right? That also means it takes time to be committed to be engaged, right? So that community engagement, that community engagement, when we say the whole community, we mean business community, we mean the faith community, we mean the black community, Latino community, whatever that community is, all, you know, all the races. We mean in government, public works, right? We mean parks and recreation. Why is that? While everybody's together, as we get to the next part, maybe a solution is in parks and recreation. Maybe it's with school and education, and you need those folks that are there, right? You need the faith leaders to say, okay, let's do this. You need the business community there, because you might need some extra money, right? So there's that community engagement there. And then this last piece here is problem solving. That's probably one of the most important parts, strategic problem solving. And what's strategic, and we used to use something called the SARA model, Scanning, Analysis, Response, and Assessment. Scanning, Analysis, Response, and Assessment, right? And you saw a couple folks, I see my brother nodding, it's in here. The scanning is, imagine this, when all of this stuff gets over with, or we do it by Zoom, or we do it like this, you have the diverse community coming together. And when you have that diverse community, that whole community coming together there, and then they're saying, you all are saying, what are our strengths? Now, here's a good one. What are our weaknesses or our issues? What are our problems, however you want to make it sound pretty? But you're talking about, what are our weaknesses, what are our problems? And then there's some agreement saying that we can't save the world, we can't save our community just like that. So let's pick maybe three, right? So we're coming together, and we're picking maybe three problems, three issues, three opportunities, however you want to frame it there, that's the scanning part. Some places, it's drugs, some places, it's race, some places, it's health, some places, it's transfer, whatever, it's unique to what the people say for that community. The scanning, and then the analysis, now you gotta go do your homework. You gotta get the right people to the table to get a deeper understanding of the issues for that community, the analysis. Sometimes we just want stuff fixed like that. And I haven't really seen that happen twice, other than on my spiritual side, because God does perform miracles, and it can be done just like that, right? So you have the scanning, you have the analysis. Someone says, we have a gang problem. I'll throw something out there real quick. What age, right, gang, what type of gangs, what age limits, what genders, what locations, right? What's the crime? What are they dealing with? What kind of, you're following me, that analysis? Maybe you're just the recruitment that, a long time ago, and some people didn't like this, and they called it too social, but we got it. Some, one community came up with, they called it midnight basketball. You know what midnight basketball did? In some places, it gave young people somewhere to go after hours rather than hang. I'm not saying that's good for this community or community B or C, but for example, that was, here's one more. Here was the issue for one community it worked with, said, we need public transportation by public housing so people can get to work better, whatever it is. And the last piece here is assessment, assessment. We've identified the problem, we've done the, I'm sorry, what I didn't say is the response. We came up with the response, I gave you some examples, right? And then after the response, then you say the assessment. Ahead of time, you say, you don't wait until the end, but you say, right when you get ready to implement the response, you say, this is how we're gonna evaluate or assess. A year from now, we're gonna take a look at these measurables. So I'm gonna end there, because I know you have a question and answer period, and I know you really want to go local, and I think that's what it's all about. We just wanted to drop a nugget or to, there for you to really stop and think about, yes, we have to deal with the global issues, I've been there. Yes, we have to deal with the national issues, I've been there. Yes, we have to deal with the state issues, right? Also, we have to deal with locally. And how is it that, you know, we're gonna do it, or gonna approach it there? It's a decision that hopefully you all make. But you have to make sure that you stay encouraged and you stay committed to bring about change, because that takes work and energies there. I'll be quiet, because that probably was too long right there. My sister cousin Nicole was saying, tell the preacher to sit down before, and I was like, yes.
You've been around the world and analyzed the systems that you've seen in all the places that you've been. What's unique to this, to us here in Duplin County? Like, what's something that you feel like we need to address as a community or as a county?
So you go think this is a scapegoat answer, right? I think what specifically for Duplin County needs to address is mobilizing the folks to determine what they need to address, right? So, and I think that's, just bringing folks together and saying, what do you want? That by itself is not as easy as it sounds. And we're talking about where no one is saying, well, I want to get the credit, I want to be in charge, and I'm, you know, this and all that. Folks just coming together and saying, okay, let's come together, and let's figure out what our top two or three issues are. So that coming together is, I would say, would be, and then coming up with a strategy and getting commitment, you know, from folks.
So what has been used as a mobilization tool that you've seen as being successful in other places?
You go ahead now, you're good, you're good. Want me to tell you? Right here. And I'm not being lying. When you have people like Brother Nicole and, I call her sister, I mean, Sister, Cousin Nicole and Brother Joel, when you get, it often takes somebody in the community to say, let's do this. And for that remnant to grow, and then you have the mayor and the police chief, when you start to get that buy-in, some communities, it's around the faith community, because it's the spiritual leaders, black, white, rich, poor, that can bring folks together. How about this, listen real quick here. Sister Nicole, and I hear you all, what's that community college you went to up the road? What's that, what's that called? Oh, I'm sorry, that's not a community college, it's A&amp;T, I'm sorry, I'm sorry! I'm sorry, I'm sorry, everybody in the seat. Ego pride, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, now I just lost. So real quick, because I'm getting ready to be chased off here. And I say that in love, and when we say that, you see the response we got? So imagine the HBCU alumni coming together and say, let's do this. Winston-Salem, Fayetteville State, NCCU, right? A&amp;T, I don't want to, I know you're, Shaw, you know, St. Aug, I'll get in trouble here the second, you know, here. But imagine alumni coming together and let's say do it. Imagine the Masons, imagine the Greeks, right? So, yeah, I see some Greeks. So that's what I see, because you have that service focus, right? And then you have numbers in ears. Good questions, sis. Brother Joel's saying, please don't let him say anything else. Thank you.
The answer session, Nicole, the thing look different. What do I need to do? I ain't do nothing, I just sat down. So you were good? All right, now, I can see. So, this last portion, for everybody that's here and on Zoom, we're gonna do a question and answer session, because like Dr. Herring alluded to, like, this is where it all begins, community, local officials trying to come together and, like you said, discover what our issues are, because this is the thing, like, our issues aren't national issues necessarily. Like, we're not, our issues aren't gonna be the same thing here that we're seeing on the news or that we see get pushed in the media, because sometimes we gotta understand that the media has its own agenda and its own reasoning behind publicizing certain stories and not other stories. So as a community, we don't want to get caught up in that too much and lose sight of what's gonna help us grow as a community, because this is where we live. We don't necessarily live in Baltimore, we might have family in places like that, but we're not necessarily in St. Louis. We, you know, we're here in Beulahville and rural Duplin County, so our problems are gonna be a little different than those that we have nationally. Not to say that we shouldn't pay attention to what's going on nationally, because we understand that those things do affect us, and it could affect how laws and ordinances are structured because of those things that are happening nationally. So we gotta pay attention to those. But we're gonna get to some local stuff, and here's some questions that, so these questions I got from Facebook, there are questions that I got from friends, family, but we just have a list of questions from different places, different people. And so we just want to get the feedback from Mayor Jones and Police Chief Rogers. So the first question is more of a, just in general question. So the first question is for the mayor, and so this is what we do. Mayor Jones, I have about, one, two, three, I have about four questions for you, and then Chief Rogers, we'll bring you in, I think you have a list of questions. So we'll bring you in a little later with some questions, and then we have some questions for both of you. So the first question that we have is for the mayor. So what is your first thought when you hear the word racism?
Joel, um, for those of you that don't know me, I am Pudge Jones. I'm the mayor, been in office for a couple of years now. This is my first, uh, position, uh, with any sort of government. And I first want to say, Joel, I appreciate you putting this on. I appreciate you stepping up. Joel has, over the last several months, has been one of those folks that has asked great questions and is doing great things in the community and I hope, you know, we can keep him in the community for a long time. So I thank you, I appreciate, uh, Dr. Herring being here as well, uh, it means a lot. I appreciate the community being here. And for those that are home, thank you for watching. I'm going to sidestep your first question.
Okay.
And what I'm going to do is rattle for a few minutes. And what I was saying when, when we got ready to begin there with that first question, um, I had told Joel I wasn't going to take over what he was trying to do tonight, but I don't want to lose momentum that we've had because of time constraints. You know, because this, this is going to be a very important meeting for all of us. I want it to be a springboard for things to come for all of us, um, at, at every level, even to the point that it's a global level, like hearing. Um, I was sitting here taking a lot of notes and I had a lot of things running through my mind. And, you know, I said to myself, you know, I can sit here and give answers to questions and you guys could hear the same answers to similar questions on the radio, on the email, on Facebook. You can read into that whenever you hear the responses. But I want to pick up where I heard Dr. Herring leave and where this meeting has gone so far. And, and maybe what we can do is, is if there's any questions on that list, Joel, I'll definitely go through and answer. But I just want to talk a few minutes about a lot of things that I've heard so far because I think that people need to hear that we're all human. You know, when we start talking about racism, now there are, there are situations that racism does exist. But first and foremost, we're all humans. We're all, whatever religion you believe in, we are of a higher being and I call that Creator God. But I was trying to break it down to my experiences in life. I grew up in Alton, which is on the suburbs of Beulahville, about eight, ten or 20 miles from here. Went to BF Grady. Uh, my parents still live in Alton, I live here in Beulahville, I attended East Duplin High School, did college at UNC Chapel Hill, did graduate school at Appalachian State. And never thought in my mind that I would ever come back to Duplin County. Actually, at one point in time, for a few years, I worked in Cary, um, had a great position there, a great job, and it's always that ideal situation. But it didn't hit me until a few years ago, when I had children, um, the motto of the town of Beulahville, does anybody know what the town motto is for town Beulahville?
Do I get the place to come home to?
A place to come home to, I think Joel's probably heard me say something like that before because I do talk about that a lot, um, not just Beulahville, but Duplin County, Southeastern North Carolina. There's things about this place that, that make us good. There are things that we would like to change, there are things that we all want to change. But there was something that, that drew me back here, just like it either keeps or draws you all here. But again, going through kind of a list of things, the way I live my life and the way I look at things and the way I think and I see people, um, there's a couple of kind of slogans I go by, not just a place to come home to, but I didn't joke while ago in the midst of the, the Aggie and the Central and the Shaw. For those of you, for those of you who, who know, um, Woody Durham was a, a long time commentator. And one of the things that he always said, which he always said, never had any meaning and didn't make any sense was, "Go where you go and do what you do." And that was a slogan he came up with and he admitted that there was never any meaning behind it other than go where you go, do what you do, put the meaning in, in, in what you do. And I think that's important. We all have to have meaning in our life. And I'm going to try to tie all this together if I get too, if, if things sound too good in my head. But again, go where you go, do what you do. The second one is, and you guys can probably go back to this one, "Hey Caesar, what is Caesar's?" It's a statement in Bible, references government and the role of government. Government is not the be all and end all. It should not be. Individuals should not look to the government to make their life better. It's, it's government's role to be a part of life, but it's not a role of government to be your life. And if anybody can pick that, pick out who said this, I'll, I will really, it's, it's a Tar Heel who said this, but, some people wish things would happen, some people want things to happen and some people make things happen. Does anyone know who said that?
Dean Smith.
Very close, and I'm a big Dean Smith fan, but it was Michael Jordan. So again, think, think about that. Some people, some people wish things would happen, some people hope things would happen, some people make things happen. I want you to put a lot of emphasis on some people make things happen. This is one of my father, that, that always sticks with me, something my father said. I don't know if he, he even realizes that how big of an impact it is. Life is what you make. We all have opportunities day in and day out to make our life our life. Right now is the past, right now is the future. If you live in the moment and take advantage of the moment, you'll be where you are today. And one that I've always come up with, doesn't have a whole lot of meaning to anybody but me, is be good. In all the things that you do, be good. And I hope you can kind of see a lot of levels. It was really hitting me the way Dr. Herring was talking a few minutes ago about the, the globalization, nationalization, state and local. I'm a firm believer that this is what it's all about right here, guys. For those of you that are here, for those of you at home, for those of you that will maybe listen or watch this later, this is what it's all about. I'm not going to sit here and tell you I've got all the answers. I don't want to have all the answers. A psychologist 100 years ago by the name of B.F. Skinner was a very, he's, he's a genius. A lot of things that he believed and, and proved still are in, in, um, in being acted out today. But he always said, "I want to be proved wrong. I want you to learn from me, but I want you to prove me wrong." Or make better what I do. And so with that, you know, what we've talked about here tonight is there's no magic to curing the things that we're seeing in the news. There's no magic to answering racism. We've got to continue to have these type of conversations at a local level, at a civil level and, and look at not what we did wrong, but what do we need to do right? And so when we talk about a lot of these issues that we're dealing with, again, I go back to there's no magic to it, except recognizing and humbling ourselves right now to think, we don't have all the answers. Like I say, Joel's got a, a list of questions here that he's going to ask me and some of these, I'm honestly, I don't have the answers for. Do I want to ignore and sidestep any questions? No. I don't want to because I want to learn and I want to grow. I want to be humble. Another comment that was made is we always strive to do better. We always look at ourselves as leaders. Each individual in here, each individual hearing this, has the opportunity to be a leader in the community. I challenge you to do that. How do you do that? You ask questions. Not in a disrespectful manner, but in a manner that does create some level of dialogue. Why do we do things this way? What's this process? I don't understand. Or can you help me participate in local government? If you live in the town of Beulahville, we have, uh, board meetings, the first Monday of every, every month at 6:30, they're open to the public. We encourage people to come. You don't have to be an elected official, you don't have to speak. Matter of fact, there's some folks I see out here that frequent our meetings all the time. Be a leader by doing that. Always look for things to be better. Try to push and move things forward. Don't take no for an answer. But as Dr. Herring said, the biggest thing that we can all do at this point in time is come together and have these conversations. I'm going to jump to question six. Question six, um, Dr. Herring hit on this early on, uh, but question six, the, of the list of questions that we've gotten here in front of us, um, and it was for the chief and I, but it says, uh, "What are the two top issues in facing our community?" It's actually funny and I had one of those aha moments when Dr. Herring was si- sitting up there and he said, "Participation, community participation, community engagement." If I've got to say one of the two biggest issues that we have for the town of Beulahville is community participation and commitment. Very few people ever come to board meetings. Very few people give us calls and say, well, what's the policy on this or how can I help? Um, we're actually working on a newsletter right now to go out to our, our community in the next couple of weeks. That's going to be an information packet really welcoming any way we can be of a service to the community, we're going to do that. The other issue that we have and, and you're going to laugh when I say this, is grass mowing. I'm surprised I didn't get a laugh because you guys know that that, there's going to be a, a, a loaded story there. And the reason I say grass mowing in the town of Beulahville is because there are a number of factors that, again, going back to what Dr. Herring was saying, there's, there's little things every day that affect the community. And no, grass is not a major issue in the town of Beulahville, but it's important because it's what people see. Your lawn, how you take care of your house, how you take care of your neighbor's house. And, and I hope people can ride through the town of Beulahville and think back to what that motto is of which, a place to come home to. Well, do you want to come home to a trashy, junky, rundown, dilapidated, oh, no! You want to be proud that when you bring somebody through here and you say, "I live here," or "I lived here," "I grew up here," "I had family here." You want to be proud of that. And, and the reason I say grass mowing is because it's important that people see that from the community. We can, we might be able to, to agree that we're going to disagree, but we are going to agree that we're going to have certain things good about our community. We're going to be community strong. And Beulahville is, 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 is working toward that. We have, we have a pretty strong volunteer group, but we always need more. So regardless of who you are, get out and participate, ask. Because a lot of times people think that, a lot of times people think that my position is a fully funded, full-time job. It's not, mine's a part-time job. Some people think that our recreation board that runs all of our recreation sports, that those are paid positions, they're not 100% volunteers. There's a sign on the wall that the folks at home can't see, but it's Hog Wild. That's an event that's been running in Beulahville as a fundraiser for the Greater Beulahville Revitalization and the Beulahville Chamber of Commerce. It's a, it's a big event, it's, it's a lot of, it's, it's a lot of work and coordination with a lot of people, but we need more. We need people to participate in our board meetings. But it's not just here in the town of Beulahville. That's something that can be applied in Duplin County, in North Carolina, in the, in the South, in the North, United States and globally. We've got enough wealth and resources in this world that we could potentially take care of everyone if we could drop the bureaucracy and come together and decide that's what we're going to do. Some places it's easier to do than others because one of the questions in here is about, um, funding for education. The town of Beulahville is a very, uh, small municipality as compared to some across the state. Our budget is, is relatively small. Uh, we're working on that, our board has done an excellent job of trying to reverse debt and save money and have money for resources. But those are, those are some of the things that, that, when I joke about community participation and grass, grass is so important because it leads to respect and, and aesthetics in the community. What does that do? That encourages people to come here and live here, this is a great place to live. So when people come here, that means our businesses thrive, more people come in our businesses, shop local. Where that's important, more people come in our businesses, the municipalities get more local sales tax. The biggest commodity right now for the town of Beulahville is, is, is its sales tax. Even in the midst of COVID-19, we just had the largest sales tax revenues for the month of June than we've ever had. Why can't we do that all the time? Because people go elsewhere to spend their money. COVID-19 has kept things local, that has been great for the town of Beulahville. Now, I can't speak for every business in the town of Beulahville because some have been restricted up until recently, uh, due to COVID-19. But what that shows us is that we've got the volume of people in our community to shop local, make businesses stronger, bring more businesses into the town, create more jobs, that in turn, it looks good, I've got opportunity for leisure and jobs and I can stay local. And Beulahville can be a place that I come home to. And so the grass is a small cog in that wheel of keeping things local, but it's not about one magic bullet or response or, or let's do this and this will happen. It's a lot of little things and it goes back to us individually. And I hope you can tie it back to some of those things I said earlier, is about how important it is for us to, each of us to think what our role and responsibilities are in the bigger picture. I'm a psychologist in my daytime job and I've seen a lot of people over my 20 years of experience. I've worked in a lot of settings. And what you will find is most people are very simple in, in their needs and wants. They want to respect themselves, they want to respect their families, they want to live independently and be prosperous in some capacity. That's not, there's not a dollar figure tied to that, but everyone wants that, that basic need. If you look across different cultures, a lot of those same things would play into that. And so when we talk about what our roles are with regards to racism, I'm not trying to sit here and say that it does not exist, it does. There's bad apples in every group everywhere you go. There are mean people in this world. There are a lot more people with a lot bigger hearts out there that need to get motivated, get away from the TV, stop watching CNN, stop watching Fox, stop worrying about what someone says they ought to think and get out and live the way that they want to live. And they need to take charge and they need to participate locally. That's the reason this meeting is so important because this man right here has put all this on. He didn't have to, it's probably been a chore for him, but he's done that. He's come to me and told me, anything I can do to help you. And I take that as, anything I can help you with the town of Beulahville, he's going to do that. And I know there's others in this audience that have done the same thing and that want to be involved and want to participate. And as long as we get up tomorrow and we say, this is going to be our initiative to all live a better life, I do think there, there's a lot of, a lot of peace that could be achieved with that. Now with that, I have jumped around on your question list a great deal, but I just, I, I had to do my sermon too. And so I'm going to, I'm not as eloquent as Dr. Herring, but, um, but I do want to field these questions and I don't want to sidestep any of them, Joel. So which ones do you want? I don't know how much time we have, but, uh, we, you know, we can field any of these questions specifically.
No, so you, I mean, you did a great job, um, you've actually fielded a couple of them, um, with what you said, um, which is one of the ones that, so we will continue along, um, the same, uh, lines that we were talking about. So what, uh, one of the questions is, and, uh, maybe kind of piggyback on what you were just saying. What ways, uh, is question three, uh, we're just going to get to the, to the end of the question. As mayor, what steps can the government, the community take? Thank you. To, um, to allocate funds, uh, for, uh, we have cultural diversity, but just for, um, improving the community in general. So I, I, and then I, when I was reading, I was thinking about, okay, we have a, a thing called Hall of Fame. That's one way, like what are, what are some other ways that maybe the, uh, local government and the community can get together to, uh, allocate some more funds? Because we know, improving the community costs money. I mean, like it's, it's, it takes money to do anything. So, um, we don't want to, because we know Beulahville- So, um, we don't wanna, because we know Beuloville has a small budget, we don't, as a community, or at least for myself, I speak for myself. I don't think that I, we should just let the government have to fill all of that because, yeah, we can work on grants, but if anybody who's ever tried to get a grant knows that it's a slow process. You gotta fill it out and then there's months and months and months to go by while you wait for them to review the grants. And then if you get it, you get it, and then it might take a while for you to even get the money after the months have gone by for you to get, you know what I'm saying, get the grant. So, what are some things that you feel like that maybe we could do, maybe, maybe it's events, maybe, I don't know, we could sack raise, I'm open, like.
Well, I, and I, and I think, and I think you just answered the question yourself, Joel. Um, like I started out, government should not be what we look toward as the leader of, of our lives. Now, I know for a lot of situations, people do rely on, on government. But for most of us healthy people, um, doing exactly what you just said, looking for things to do to invest in your community. Looking for things in ways as simple as, how many of you shop for gas? Does everybody ride around and look at the gas prices? My wife picks on me because I can tell her pretty much what gas prices are from Wilmington to Kentston to Jacksonville and Clinton. Those are places I go, and I can tell her where the cheapest gas is.
Oh, my mama can do that.
And this is, this is, I, and, and, and some of you may laugh and, or not believe me on this one. Beuloville tends to run on the high side of what, I'm not gonna say it's always the most expensive, but it tends to run on the high side. I've had questions before, why does the town of Beuloville set their gas prices the way that they do? The town of Beuloville does not have any responsibility for gas prices, nor does any other government facility, other than what's regulated coming from the National Reserve on a, on a national level. But here's the thing, one of the cheapest places nearby in all that district that I just described is, is within driving distance. Some people would drive there just to get, you know, 10 cent off gallon gas. I purposely buy a majority of my gasoline in the town of Beuloville. And the reason I do that is because even though it's fractions of pennies, but sales tax comes back to the local community. If you live in the town of Beuloville, it comes to the town of Beuloville. If you get that, uh, that gasoline outside, it's gonna go to the county. A portion of the town stuff's gonna go to the county as well. But I just said the month of June was the most prosperous month that the town of Beuloville has ever had with sales taxes. That's because we had more people staying local than any other time. Folks, you don't realize how much of an impact each of you make, or each of us makes, in that. If our businesses thrive, the town has money. Now, it is our responsibility as a board to spend that money appropriately.
So how do you make the people stay in town? Other than a pandemic?
I guess I think about, to piggyback off of that, there are movie theaters, malls, there's real world going on outside of Beuloville and in town. Being from here, there's just not been so much to do. There were always whispers of theater coming on the other side near Subway instead of, you know, another place to eat, there's nothing to do.
Right.
The parks.
Uh, yeah, and I, and I'm, and, and I think those are valid questions. And I think what I'm saying is, give some. Think, think about what your day-to-day priorities are. And, and no, I can't promise that the town of Beuloville is gonna have a, a movie theater. Uh, I can't promise that. Right. Well, it's a good, it's a good point. But, but what I'm saying is that we can all give a little. And, and that, and that's really the answer to the, or I won't answer that question in that way. Is going back to what we've talked about, is each individual looking at what their priorities are and saying that I'm gonna devote some of my resources, even if it's fractions of pennies, buying a Diet Sundrop at the local convenience store. Or shopping at the local hardware store versus going to Lowe's or a Home Depot, those kind of things.
That may be more of the issue that we would have in this community more so than the other things that's on the national level because it might be the sentiment from the local people, some local people, that it's better things out there, you know? Like, you get better service maybe, you get better products, you get, um, whatever it is out there that they're offering. So, how is the community, you know, attractive to the locals? Like, what, what is it about this that they're, what are, what are they going out there for, you know what I mean? Like, what can you, what as a community can we provide our locals, you know, to attract them? Maybe that's the question I'm trying to ask, back to the community? Cause I mean, I.
I think, I think.
I personally would go to Walmart instead of going to the local grocery store just because of.
Right, and, and I think, and, and, and I can't say that that's wrong. And I think that's a generational thing that we have to be honest that that's, cause that's a great argument. I mean, I mean, it just is. You can't get everything that you need here. John F. Kennedy said during his presidency, think not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country. And I think that's kind of a shift that we've gotten away from. I think it's very basic, very simplistic. And, and if that's where an individual is, where they don't wanna do the things that they can't hear, even volunteering, um, taking on a role on a, on a volunteer board, if they don't want to spend their money here, that's fine. The state can use that money. I'm just saying that we have to look at each individual intention that we go through every day. And is that consistent with what we want to see happen? Even if it's only small scale where it's a fraction of a penny that you're contributing to the local economy and it costs you just, you know, 10 cent more. That extra fraction helps move the community where it is, okay? And, and if you decide, if, if anyone decides, hey, this is not for them, that's fine. This may not, the town of Beuloville may not be a place that you can come home to. Duplin County may not be a place, I mean, I have friends that live out of state. They got a job, they took off. That's fine, they're happy. But what I'm saying is, you've got, you've got two choices. You can make the best of it or make the worst of it. You can blame others or you can blame yourself. And you can participate and, and take those steps. And hopefully we're sitting here in 10 or 20 years and, and we're all joking about all these things that we did in our community. And that community can be Beuloville, uh, Keenonsville, Warsaw, Rose Hill, Calypso, Duplin County, Wilmington, whatever you participate in. It goes back to what I was saying about government, sometimes we put way too much stock in government. The people own the government. Each one of you own government at, at any level. The government is not this group of secondary people that were trained to be politicians. They're people just like you.
And I think that's a good point to make, I think sometimes we get caught up in the, uh, majesty of politics. And we think that politicians are these people who are outside of ourselves, like they're people just like us, like, um, they may, like, once you get into higher levels, like CNN, Congress, sure, those people may study to take on those roles, or sure, those people may have gotten tutelage or been around people who are involved in politics, but they're just people. You know, you can do it too. There's nothing stopping any of us from being senators or congressmen. Well, now, money comes in, but I won't, in a general, in a perfect sense, like, there's nothing stopping you from doing it, you can run. Money's a factor now, but it didn't, and that wasn't always the emphasis, that, that has changed over time, but money is a factor, but. Now, we can, you can do it, run, like, don't get caught up in the hype of, like, politicians and government officials being more than you are, you know? They're not, they're people just like you are, so we just have to remember that. But, so we're gonna, we're gonna move along too, cause I got two more questions because, you know, we're running out of time. We don't wanna stay in here too late, we appreciate the mayor and the chief coming, but we also, and we appreciate Dr. Herring, so we wanna make sure that we do everything decently and order. Um, another question I got, uh, is, so we'll, we'll get to this, the last question of your mayor is one that I, um, I wanna ask you. So, uh, it says, studies have shown that there's a direct correlation between poverty and crime. In Duplin County, we have nearly 3,000 students from the age of six to 14 living in poverty. How can we do better as a community?
There's also a study that shows that there's a direct correlation between churches and murder rates. Okay, do you know what the, the confounding variable is in that?
No.
The confounding variable is population. Anytime you have a growing, growth in population, anything that correlates is gonna grow too. And so, again, this is one of those complex questions that I don't know. Just like I said, with regards to Beuloville being a microcosm and choices that we all make affect that, the county is affected by that as well. And so, how do we address that? Um, one of the groups that I've been sitting on the board for about 15 years, uh, the Duplin Foundation for Youth Advancement, that's a group that has raised almost a million dollars over the, the last 15 years to, um, give grants and opportunities to groups specifically for adolescent or children under the age of 18 in Duplin County. And, and, and so, how do we do that? Um, I think number one, we recognize it's a problem. And it doesn't matter if it's 3,000 or if it's one, that's too many. And again, at whatever level you decide to participate in your community, I think we number one have to recognize there is an issue. Just like with racism, I mean, we have to recognize it's an issue. And we have to decide that what things are we gonna do daily to change those? Whether it's sitting on the board, whether it's recognizing the family next door, or kid that you saw on the street, or a family that you know that, I mean, I, I was told a story this afternoon of, of a family that, um, there's two kids, two parents, um, they live in a home that's owned by one of the family's parents, all their bills are paid by one of the parents. They can't get a job because they don't have transportation. So what can you do for that family? Is there something that's gonna be that magic bullet, that magic whatever that's gonna happen? No, um, but I think we can do something. And, and I think that's the important piece, is like, like what we've talked about, is we have to decide that we are the agents of change and that we have to take it upon ourself to take responsibility to try to address those in some way. There are groups in Duplin County that actually do a really good job at recognizing those kids with the school system. I've got to say that that's one of the things I've been most impressed with, with our school system, um, during this whole pandemic. Now, it's not just the whole pandemic that they have been doing this, but recognizing that, that food is important. Nutrition is important for everyone. And so I know a lot of, the, the school system, as well as a lot of, uh, churches, as well as a lot of groups from outside of Duplin County are trying to, to man, um, getting food out to folks, dealing with poverty situations. But again, I think as for, I put the responsibility back on each of us to, to, to deal with that over time. And do I think we're doing a, a great job? No, you can always do more. But I think if you get out and get involved, start asking questions, start recognizing and doing things, you recognize that there are people, there are people, I think, um, if any of you ever watched Mr. Rogers growing up on PBS, he always talked about helpers. There are a lot of helpers out there that you necessarily wouldn't know it, but they do things without any, any sort of benefit to themselves and the, and the help. And so that's what I'm encouraging us to be, a, a, a group of helpers.
Yeah, I would, um, think about the poverty piece, um, that, that's, that's crucial, um, especially in Duplin County. And I said, especially when it comes, I know the roles of government and things of that nature. I was a, um, I was a product of a single mother, we lived in the housing authority projects. And, uh, she was a full-time mom. If it worked for government programs, like food stamps, food and aid, even though she had a full-time job, if it weren't for, um, government programs, like summer jobs, I would've got in trouble. If it weren't for government programs like Pell Grants, my fortune, my four siblings could not have gone to college. We cannot be detached because we are today. Um, we moved here to Duplin County from Charleston maybe 12, 13 years ago. And we, I worked for a federal nonprofit and my wife's an educator. And the issue with, um, poverty and how it correlates with crime and things of that nature is that in the school systems, um, the ones without the supports and the ones without the two-parent households and the one with the single parents, those are the ones that tend to get pushed aside, those ones tend to drop out. And these are the ones that tend to end up in the court system. Like, like I say, in, in walking the street, things of that nature. And it's kind of sort of under-rubbed a little bit, but the numbers are there. Um, like I said, it's like a microcosm, probably, it's not as big as it may be in Raleigh, things of that nature. But when you do have a high poverty rate, that does impact the quality of life. Like, it, I, I, it's obvious that the life that me and my wife can provide for our children is not the same that a lot of people in Duplin County can. The question is, what can we do as a community, government, whatever, to help those who may be less fortunate, who don't have those resources? And I think sometimes government do have a role in that sometimes. Because I'm not here if it weren't for those programs. My family, my sisters, my brothers, my children going to college, things of that nature. That's not possible if it was not for their, not to take advantage of. But how can you make that final line where it don't depend on it, of course? But how you draw that final line to help those who actually need that hand up as sincere to get over their life? And I think that's the, the trick. Mostly not at local level sometime, but definitely on the state, county.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I think that's a, a great point. And that's, and that's kind of the different layers that we've gotta recognize, that all governments are not created equal.
Yeah.
You, our tax base here in Beuloville is 109 million dollars, that's a lot of money. Well, our budget only runs a couple of mi- runs a couple of million a year, and that's just for basic services. And, you know, the town currently has debt. And so, I will say that this board is, is actively pursuing getting ourselves in better, um, monetary position. One of the things we've just done, um, recently with the police department is increase the number of police officers. And what we want to do there is provide, um, well, not what we want to do, but what we're actually doing is providing 24/7 coverage to hopefully quell some of that, um, late night, uh, crime rate that we run into. But you're, I mean, you're exactly right. I mean, if, if you're sitting on a billion-dollar budget, you've got more opportunities than, than say the town of Beuloville does. But that, that doesn't mean that that's an excuse for us, you know? I mean, it, cause, cause I do think it's important to have great resources. Someone mentioned parks and services earlier. You want to feel safe walking down the street. You want to be proud of what you see. You want to be able to go, in some cases, walk from one end of town to the other end, to walk to the ballpark on a nice day. You want to be able to play basketball outside. You want to feel safe if you have a, a midnight basketball league. You don't wanna be taken advantage of. And so, I think you're exactly right, I appreciate you pointing that out, cause that, that's an excellent point.
I, I will say, politics is local, I mean, I've come to all the board meetings. Right, I mean, start coming, start coming, all of them. And I see those interactions every day and, and perspectives that I did have, I have now, even with the police department, you know? Budget discussion, the budget, and these things that affect me directly. And it's kind of discouraging sometimes to see that, no, there's nobody here. But that's fine, but, so I, I see that side too, so I should be quick to judge and quick to make a snap judgment. But once I begin to sit down in the hour in the back and kind of just look and listen, I say, okay, I kind of get it now. And when it comes to police, like, I go into projects, my experience with police was horrible. I mean, it's just a fact, I mean, it was traumatic, my wife would tell you. But, and that was my foundation. But the issue that was in inner city where I lived at versus Beuloville, oh man, every time I see Dooley, it's like, oh yeah, it's my man, how you doing, sir? So even, so in the beginning, it was like, you have that, you know, cause the experience. But like I said, the issues are still. But like I said, the issues are still up, but there are some things that still can be worked on, obviously. Um, but the key thing is dialogue, the fact that we're talking and meeting with each other and seeing each other face to face on a Friday evening. Once you start that dialogue and misconceptions that you may have taught about people that you've seen and never say anything to you, once you get to talk to them and know them, that's when the process begins, and that's when we start looking forward.
Well, and I, and I think that to piggyback that and answer one of your other questions, one of the other questions were, uh, do you feel a lack of racial diversity in Beulahville Police Force negatively infects, negatively affects minority communities? At different levels, the answer is different. Perceptually, yes. Anytime you have someone that you have to deal with that is different from you ethnically, it leads to misconceptions and misperceptions. Um, do I, do I feel like that's the case here in the town of Beulahville? No, I have no reason, have not fielded any complaints since I've been in office. Um, Jamie, you've been with the force how long?
Seven years here.
Se- seven years, and I've got to say that Jamie has taught me a lot about his position and about things that they do in the police department and the training that they go through. Can I sit here and convince people that that's the case? Cause I'm sure there's gonna be that one person sitting on saying, I had this experience, when? I'm saying that this force recognizes where the culture is right now globally, nationally. Recognizes the impact that they play with regards to that relationship with any community and law enforcement. And I know for a fact that even before I was in office, those were conversations that were being held. And I dang sure know right now that it is, because we don't want those sort of misperception, misconceptions. Again, there's, there, there are bad people in bad places. I just, I don't think we have it here, and I think that yes, it would be great if we had a more diverse group. And cur- matter of fact, I tried to beg Joel a couple of board, or a couple of meetings ago, to go get his, uh, his, his law enforcement certification, so he could have a position for it with us. Uh, we're, we're still working on it, but what, what I'm saying is, is again, we're, the, the conversations are on the table, even internally, even at the board meetings, and I appreciate you, you saying what you said about, you know, coming to board meetings and the conversations. Because even Monday through Friday, when they're, when we're meeting in town, or meeting in the offices here, or conversations between Jamie and I, those type of situations, we're, we're wanting not to try to sidestep or say it won't happen here. But to recognize that we can, and what can we do to better prepare ourselves to avoid any sort of situation where something is misconstrued, misconstr- or handled wrong by anyone, so. Was there a hand that was gonna go up?
Yeah, hold on, I got two, hold on, hold on, uh, Chris had a question, then Laura will get you, and these probably be the last few questions y'all, because it's eight fifty-two and our Zoom is only for nine o'clock, so.
And real, real quick, you just a short answer here, because I don't know, and sometimes this perception, are there, um, issues more prevalent to the black community in Beulahville? Right, from the mayor and chief and then Joel, because sometimes perceptions or reality differ. So just real briefly, are there, are there issues more prevalent in the black community, um, in Beulahville? Coming from outside, just curiosity.
You want to answer it?
One of our main problems that we have i- is drugs, just because of the low-income poverty areas. And, and most of those drugs come from people that don't even live in town. They just come and gather up with their buddies and, and we have to investigate that. And, and then it draws all the other criminals, the users, and people that want to stop and steal something somewhere and, so they can come by. That's, that's our main that we have.
One of the things, or several of the things that we've been focusing on for the last couple of years has been, um, community communication. And, and I don't wanna sit up here and be like the politician that says, oh, it doesn't happen here, or no, I'm not aware of it, and sidestep things. But I do think community perception is very important, I think community communication is very important. And, and what we're trying to do now, and have been since, uh, twenty eighteen, is open every line of dialogue, whether it's Facebook, website, email, town one calls. We've even taken an initiative to have all of our staff call citizens during the week. You know, a certain number, just a handful of citizens a week and just check in. And that's, and that's everybody. Just increasing that relationship so that everyone knows that they're important, everyone knows that they can come to us. Trying to make this town the best that it can be. With the flip side of that, we've also formalized a complaint process. If someone has a straight-up legitimate complaint, it's not a, oh, I'll get back to you, or I'll take it, and you never hear anybody. We actually have a paper process that, that somebody, if they have a complaint, have a critique, they can come in, there's a, a form that they, a real brief form that they can fill out. If for some reason they can't come in, they can call or request it, we can email, fax it, even hand-deliver it if need be. And so, really, both for the good and the bad, community engagement i- is, is the major issue, community in- involvement. I mean, drugs, uh, folks not being able to find jobs, not having transportation, I mean, those are, we're no different from a lot of towns. But the community engagement piece is, is probably the biggest piece. But I'm, I'm not aware of any major issues anywhere in the community.
And, and the reason I asked it here from Joel and then I'll sit down, is because often to, to address or improve, you have to be real and say, here is, you know, the issue, whatever it is. And you can find things more prevalent among females, you can find something more prevalent among elderly, um, among the Hispanic and the black community, so that's why I was wondering, and sometimes it's a matter of perception and the lens looking there too, and I know you're running out of time, but Joel, uh, is there, uh, uh, from you, as a grassroots person and, and coming back, are, are there issues more prevalent in the black community that you've come across, that people have communicated to you?
Uh, so far as racism, but just in general?
More prevalent to the black community.
More prevalent to the black community, more prevalent to the black community is just, is the economic piece. It's more prevalent than, um, anything, is, is the economic piece. Um, it's a rural, it's a rural community, you know, and, um, there's not a lot of jobs around which uh, just leads to economic hardship for the black community, because there, there are only so many jobs. And, you know, and we're not a minor, I mean, we're the minority too.
And, and Dr. Herring, I will, I will say that we lost, um, a large, um, manufacturing plant right on the edge, edge of town, um, a couple of years ago. We lost a hundred and fifty-three jobs, um, and, and the, our board has been very aggressive in working with the county and anyone that would help us in getting someone back into that plant. And so, you know, we've got some things on the table with some larger companies, actually, um, going back into that national spinning plant. But there's also a second possibility of, over the next, um, ten to fifteen years, of another plant being built in that same area. Um, but yeah, I mean, that's, I, I agree with Joel, and that's, and that's where we've all gotta work together in making this the best place for people to come.
I'll go wait till next, uh. Well, if that's it, so we're gonna wrap this up, because we got about three minutes, and I just wanna tell everybody who logged in onto the Zoom, we appreciate you. We wanna say again, appreciate you Mayor Jones, appreciate you, uh, Chief Rogers, thank you Dr. Herring, we appreciate you. Thank you, all of you, for coming and participating and being here, we couldn't do this without you, it would be no point in doing this without you. So thank you all very much for coming, thank you Nicole, um, shout out to Teresa again, I'm hoping if you're gonna see this, a shout out to you again. And, um, we're gonna wrap this up and, uh, get right to adjourn. Uh, right before we adjourn though, we do have one minute, is there anything that anyone would like to say as we close out?
Technology advances a lot of things, and when I think about our life, um, technology and being the way that we communicate and otherwise create jobs or even build on jobs, I think that would be a great thing, being a technical graduate, I think that would be a great thing to look into. Our internet choices and the types of businesses that we may attract because of, uh, what we're able to have here may improve, not just the quality of your life, but, uh, otherwise for people create jobs.
I think that's a great, that's a great note, we'll end on that point. Everybody, thank you for coming, and we're gonna close it out. That's it, Nicole, that's it. All right, thank you, everybody, goodnight.